We call a meeting to order, which began with the Pledge of Allegiance, so I invite you to join us. Roll call.
Colepack?
Here.
Pepcorn?
Here.
Preston?
I, here.
Strand?
Here.
Mahoney?
Here.
Forestry, the North Dakota Forest Service hosted its annual Trees Bowl and Award Ceremony recently here at City of Fargo Forestry Department, and the Fargo Park District received the 2023 Youth Tree Planters Award for their efforts in involving students at this year's Arbor Day event. The award recognizes individual organizations and agencies who contribute to an outstanding way to forestry activities, including fire mitigation, tree planting, or environmental education. These efforts improve North Dakota's forest resources, enhance our quality of life, and impact on the state's health, safety, and economy. Health. October is recognized each year as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and the Women's Way Program at the Fargo-Cast Public Health encourages yearly mammograms as an early detection tool for breast cancer. Women's Way can help pay for screening services for women to meet the income guidelines. Community members are also encouraged to stay up to date with immunizations, including the flu, COVID, and RSV. These illnesses can lead to severe complications, especially for children and the elderly. Contact your healthcare provider or pharmacy to ask about availability. Library. A rare annular solar eclipses happening October fourteenth, so the library is hosting a solar eclipse learning event October seventh at the main library, where the students from MSUN, Department of Physics and Astronomy, and Concordia's Department of Physics will share information about that annular eclipse is and how to safely view it. If many of you don't remember, that's the Ring of Fire, in which the moon blocks out the sun, so it's really fun to watch, but you've got to do it safely. They will also lead a hands-on activity for kids, so they can have some fun with eclipse. There are several events planned, uh, other, several events planned October ninth for Indigenous Peoples' Day, including a free community breakfast at the Indigenous Association at nine AM, followed by the Gladys Ray Award presentation. And at six PM, a fried bread taco meal and powwow will be held at Morehead High School. Also, to commemorate, commemorate the Native American Heritage Month in November, the flags of the five tribal nations in North Dakota will be on, on display in the atrium of City Hall, and in fact, are up on display right now. The five tribal nations are the Mandan, Houdaxu, Erikara, Sisitun, Wapatin, Oyet, Spirit Lake, Standing Rock, and Turtle Mountain. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the Order of Agenda withdrawing item twenty-nine from the Consent Agenda, clarifying that item twenty-eight's address should read nine-two-four-seven Street North, and withdrawing item fifty-six on the Regular Agenda? Can I have a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three Regular Meeting?
So moved.
They're sec, moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda items one through thirty-eight, excluding item twenty-nine, which has been withdrawn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Preston?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Colepack?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
For resident comments, we have two speakers tonight. John Campbell would be first. Just, this one over here, John. Sorry. That's staff, that's public. You want to be hired, come on by.
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is John Campbell. I'm the Executive Director for the Coalition to End Homelessness, and I just wanted to speak on some conversations that, that have been had and, and may further be had about budget cuts and possibly defunding the Downtown Engagement Center, and just give a little bit of an example of what that looks like. The men and women that, that work at the Downtown Engagement Center are present every day with some of the most, highest needs folks that we have in our community. Defunding that would severely limit our ability to, to meet those needs, to be there for our community, and, like, our, our, City of Fargo, our motto is, you know, farm more, be there. The coordinated approach that, that the DEC and those that work there utilize with other agencies to help deliver services, housing programs, is community-wide. The housing solution, as, as housing, as a solution for moving us forward, the DEC provides safe, secure place for folks to, to shower, to get medical help, to stay connected to our community. Again, like I said, they assist with the most vulnerable, mental health, addiction, in any support services. Their crisis response is effective and humane, and is delegated by a person-centered approach and best practices. One of the things that I've heard over the course of my, my limited time at the Coalition has been what Fargo has to offer for care of the person that is experiencing homelessness is far greater than most communities have, and we would like to continue to keep that going. Not only does the DEC serve as a, as a place for people to, to get those services, it also has a knowledge base that is incredible, that can help move us forward. Again, reducing or defunding the Downtown Engagement Center would put us years behind, would we be playing catch-up, and it does not serve the overall good of our community.
Thank you, John. Ginny Stoll?
Hello, my name's Ginny, and I'm a resident of Fargo, but I also work for Churches United and Morehead and have in the past, for the past eleven years, so I'm very familiar with the unhoused population. Churches United, we serve approximately thirty percent of the Fargo and North Dakota residents experiencing homelessness, and the Downtown Engagement Center, DEC, plays a critical role in providing a safe place for people to be. According to the Fargo-Morehead State of Homelessness Report in two thousand twenty-two, we have over a thousand individuals who are homeless on any given night. The DEC plays a critical role in providing services to unhoused individuals by offering showers, connections with community and service providers, and a place of safety. Without the DEC, our most vulnerable members of the Fargo-Morehead community will go, have one last place to go while they wait for a bed, a bed and a shelter, or to open, or for a voucher for housing to come through. As the cold ultimately sinks in, we will see far more and more individuals trying to keep warm and safe, and will utilize unsafe means such as electric blankets or high-risk behavior without the DEC center. We can't go on to the days, or go back to the days of finding one of our neighbors dead on the steps of a church because we have no place to go because, to stay warm, and we as a community need to come together to take on this community challenge. But in closing, the DEC center, the DEC is a, a response, if it were to be closed, it would be catastrophic loss that would be felt by our whole community.
Thank you. Before five-fifteens, with Tom Nakmus, I'd ask you to give our recommendation on Main Avenue, please. Fifty-five is item. We have a lot of public hearings tonight, Tom, but you probably can get this in, and you've got it ready to go, right?
Well, good evening. Excuse me, I wasn't ready to speak yet. As, as just a general reminder, staff from engineering and our consultant team were in front of City Commission four weeks ago, providing a fairly lengthy update on this project, and tonight, just following up, looking for an actual recommendation or a concurrence from City Commission on our recommendation. So just as a, as a little bit of background, again, we started this, I, thank you, in two thousand twenty-one, we've been working on this project already for nearly two years. So tonight, we're kind of at a decision point. On Friday, we have a meeting in Bismarck with the North Dakota DOT, their, their management to, to talk about this project as well, and, and hopefully, we have a concurrence with them on the decision that City Commission makes tonight. Again, as a reminder, on this corridor, Twenty-third Street to Eighteenth Street really isn't changing. Really what we're focusing on are the different alternatives that we've taken a look at from Eighteenth Street to University. What you're seeing here is ultimately what we are recommending, with two eastbound lanes, shared center left turn, and one westbound lane. What we have done is modified some of our original design criteria to try to eliminate, and, and what you can see is we have eliminate the building impacts along this corridor. There was a lot, like I mentioned, a lot of conversations had between the Project Review Committee, which consisted of staff from the city, both engineering and planning, North Dakota DOT, Federal Highway, MetroCog, and then we considered a considerable amount of public input. We took all that information, kind of created this weighted scoring based on the criteria you see on the left side, and ultimately, where that kind of landed was with alternate C-two, which I showed on the last page, and taking the scoring away through conversations, this is ultimately the preferred alternative from that Project Review Committee, and then last week, PUPAC evaluated this and made a recommendation to move forward with this alternative as well. We also looked at a couple of options along the, the corridor, a total of three kind of micro options. One of them is to improve the pedestrian crossing for the railroad tracks just west of Twenty-third Street, and then also the, to widen the sidewalk all the way to Twenty-Fifth. Again, we feel this will make it more pedestrian-friendly, kind of as much as we can do, unfortunately, in this area with the, with the limited right-of-way in the current infrastructure. Another option was, we had a lot of conversation, we had just reconstructed this curb line as part of our Main Avenue project a couple of years ago, but we feel this would be the best option for addressing the new configuration at University. We feel this is a safety issue if we don't, if we don't correct and implement this option three. So again, a lot of information, ultimately, what I want you to take home is that, you know, our proposed alternative is an alternate C-two, which is a four-lane, we do modify some design criteria to be able to make it fit without any building impacts, and then we are recommending these two options. With that, recommended motion is on the screen, and I'll, I'll answer any questions.
Any questions of Tom? Mr. Strand?
Tom, I'm curious with your, your matrix that you showed with the different points, and where you aimed at the recommended alt, alternative C-two. My question is, and I'm not sure it matters if it's quantifiable, but the, the lowest score of all of them for pedestrian environment was the, was the one we're choosing. Will that have an impact on, what will that mean when we, to the pedestrians, and is, help me interpret that?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. So really, what, the reason that does rank a little bit lower is because that modified design criteria, we did have to reduce from six feet to slightly less than six feet in a couple of locations. And again, where we're talking about is near where some of those building impacts would otherwise, buildings would otherwise be impacted. So the total length of the project, it's less than six percent of the overall project, in which we have to modify that design criteria and, and, and reduce the width of the sidewalk. What we would hope is that someday, those projects will come in for redevelopment, and we would work with those property owners at that time to try to address where their building setback is, and provide for a wider sidewalk at that time.
And if I might continue, so that, I need not interpret that as a, a less safe project?
I, I, I agree with that statement. I do not believe that this is a less.
That's what I wanted to know, is that it isn't a safety issue?
No, no.
Mr. Preston?
So, Tom, as I remember, and when you look at these, the scoring mechanism here, alternative D actually outscored every, everything almost, except for the vehicular traffic, and if I remember correctly, there was a minimum, minimal kind of impact on the level of service. Am I remembering that correctly?
So, so you are certainly correct, it does rank lower on veh, vehicular traffic, but it does also rank lower on vehicular safety, and the reason for that is without that two eastbound lanes, looking at the traffic models, we did see an increase in rear-end collisions.
Okay.
And then also side swipe collisions near the intersections.
Okay, yeah, I missed that one, sorry. But when I'm looking at the drawings, I don't see, and to expound a little bit on Commissioner Strand's earlier comments about pedestrians, I was sitting at that intersection the other day, and there were people that were trying to cross three different ways on that intersection, pedestrians and bicyclists, and it's close enough to downtown that it's seeing, I think, more and more pedestrian and bicycle traffic. What kind of consideration went into, you know, those right-turn lanes are awful for both, I see crosswalks on all four sides, it doesn't look like there was a whole lot of consideration for pedestrians, sir?
I would say there certainly was, might not be displayed in, in this presentation, but there was considerable conversation over the last two years about that. Part of the issue is that when we did look at a three-lane section, to try to make it function the way it would need to function at that intersection, from my recollection, it did require an eastbound, southbound, to southbound right-hand turn lane, and so ultimately, our crossing distance for a pedestrian on the west side of that intersection would be no different with that three-lane section with a, with a turn lane versus the alternate C-two. Unfortunately, it is a busy intersection for vehicles, and, and again, we've, we've tried to do what we can as part of the project to try to make that safer, but unfortunately, with the overall volumes at that intersection, it is difficult.
And I apologize, I, I, I'm sure there was consideration of it, but what specific improvements were made for pedestrian safety?
So to be honest with you, I don't know that there have been anything, anything specifically for that intersection.
That's what I understood, yeah.
Versus what is there today.
So I would make the argument that alternative D probably would be a little bit better that way. Would it be?
Again, when it comes to movements at that intersection and crossing distances, I don't believe for a pedestrian, alternate C-two or alternate D would really operate much differently.
Okay.
Do I have a motion of this suggested motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Further discussion? I think it's a difficult task on the Main Avenue not to take out any buildings, we destroy some businesses in that area, I think that the intersection you're talking about is difficult, but it, Thirty-second Avenue has worked out really well, when I saw that when it's finished, I take a left-hand turn on Thirty-second, and I see the distance between the two curbs aren't too bad, I see pedestrians crossing there, and it really turned out really well, I think it did a great job. But I do agree with you, Tom, this is a difficult intersection, no matter how you do it, because it's vehicles, vehicles coming from the north and coming across east and west, and a lot of people go into Morehead in the evening, so it, it is going to be a challenge regardless of what you do. So thanks for all the hard work, appreciate it. Any other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Colepack?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Thank you, Tom, you took up a lot of time we needed taken, and we will start with our first public hearing. So this is item number forty, public hearing. EOLA, second edition, multiple numbers, is going to recommend approval by the Planning Commission on seven-six and nine-seven, the Plan Unit Development Master Land Use Plan is amendment, a zoning plan from General Commercial with the PUD to a general amended PUD and Plan Development, Plan Unit Development Overlay, first rezoning of the ordinance, the EOLA addition, and first reading rezoning ordinance of the EOLA, EOLA, EOLA addition, plus the plat of it, so.
Easy for you to say.
You, you, correct me, Megan, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. As this is EOLA second edition, as Mayor noted, this is applications for minor subdivision of zoning change, which would amend the PUD overlay requirements, as well as amendment to the Plan Unit Development Master Plan. The minor subdivision would replat lots one through five, block two of EOLA addition, which is the five lots south of Twenty-fourth Avenue South, and the PUD master land use plan is on the overall EOLA development, as well as the zoning change, and I have a diagram to show you in a few slides. This is located at between forty-four-ten and forty-four-seventy-four Twenty-fourth Avenue South, and forty-four-seventeen and forty-four-seventy-seven Twenty-Sixth Avenue South. The Planning Commission did recommend approval on these applications. So up on your screen, you'll see the location of where these applications are at, in the blue hatch is the zoning change and the master land use plan amendment, and then south of Twenty-fourth Avenue, in the black hatch is the minor subdivision. This EOLA development was originally approved in May of two thousand twenty-one, this is a sixteen-plus-acre site, was approved for a mixed-use development. On your screen, this is looking at the west edge of the area, right, if you can see my cursor right up here, is if you're standing at the east edge of Twenty-fourth Avenue South, the image on the top faces towards Forty-Fifth Street, towards the west, these buildings mocked are under construction, and the image below faces southwesterly into the development, this would be the location of the water park, which I'll talk about when next. On your screen, you will just see the zoning, context of the zoning, there is PI Anderson Soffel Complex to the east, and Forty-Fifth Street north is General Commercial, and south is Limited Commercial. Since the approval in two thousand twenty-one to the master plan, there's been some modifications, inclusion of a water park in a hotel in the area I'm showing here, that has brought changes forward for your review. You'll note changes to, also on the south side, which include changes for surface-level parking, and on the north side, also surface-level parking, you'll note a red, red hatch is there. The applicant has requested that with your review, and if you would choose to approve, that approval of this master plan, PUD master plan would allow for either the surface-level parking or the ramp if a parking ramp was able to be constructed here into the future. Up on your screen is a plat, this is a replat of lots one through five of the EOLA block two, EOLA addition block two, the lots are configured a little bit differently to account for the water park and hotel in that northeast corner. On your screen is the zoning change, these are modifications to the zoning ordinance, including changes, modifications to setbacks and additional standards, as well as modification to prohibited use, which the Land Development Code has since been modified since the original PUD, so more of a housekeeping item. One thing to note here is that this development has parking modifications as part of the review or approval of the development in two thousand twenty-one, there is a parking study that was redone, which accounted for the water park and the hotel, there were modifications, as I mentioned, to the PUD, original PUD ordinance, and the applicants, the parking study has shown that parking will be met on-site with these changes, the traffic engineer, City of Fargo Traffic Engineer, has reviewed that and concurred with the findings, and the applicant has noted that the modifications with the original approval still work for them today, so there's no request for any changes as far as what has been approved for, for parking on this site. Staff has received just one call of inquiry with no noted concern, and up on your screen is the recommended motion, which includes contingency based on the city engineer's final review and signature of the plat, and this applies to the subdivision only. Staff finds the criteria are met, is recommending approval, as the Planning Commission has recommended approval to your commission as well, and Brian Reiner and Blake Nybacken with Epic Companies are here, who may want to address your commission.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this recommended motion? Is there anyone who wishes to speak? I'll call the public hearing, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Preston?
Aye.
Colepack?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. Thanks, Megan. Public hearing, hearing on dangerous building located at eighteen oh nine Fourteenth Avenue South.
Good evening, Mayor. Oh, sorry, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, we're here to talk about a dangerous garage at eighteen oh nine Fourteenth Avenue South. It's a single-story detached garage, Ruthie Jensen is the owner of the property, and she is current on all her taxes. The garage roof has collapsed, collapsed into the structure, the exterior walls appear to lean due to the collapse of the roof, and the structure is becoming an attractive nuisance for children and vagrants, interior of the structure is exposed to the elements, which could lead to rot and deterioration, large gaps could allow the structure to provide harbage for vermin, and it appears to meet eight out of the ten criteria, the only reason it doesn't meet ten out of ten is because it's not considered a habitable space. Here's a timeline of events for this, we were alerted of the dangerous building back in February of two thousand twenty-three, we conducted some follow-up investigations and posted the garage, and we're here tonight for the dangerous building hearing as the ordinance requests. So here's the pictures that we can get from the public right-of-way, if you can look close, you can see that the garage appears to have a roof, but if you look very closely, you can see that the middle of that roof is collapsed inside to the garage, and these are just pictures of the posting, and the recommended motion is up on your screen, I'll stand for questions.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak regarding this building? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak? I'll call the public hearing, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Colepack?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. Item forty-two, application filed by Corvent Medical for property tax exemption, project located at forty-eight thirty-seven Amber Valley Parkway South, which applicant will use for the manufacturing of medic, medical ventilators, warehousing ventilators, and accessories used with ventilators. Jim Gomor to explain.
Thank you, this is actually a reapplication, they applied previously, and you approved it, I, at, on a Forty-Fifth Street location, at that location, they're not able to make work, and so now they're reapplying for a location out in the Amber Valley Parkway. Project provides a good number of jobs, and is recommended for approval by the Economic Development Incentive Committee, I should note, they are in the process of applying for a rezoning and conditional use permit, just like they had to get a conditional use permit at that previous location, so that'll come to you sometime in the future before they begin operations, so. Ryan Ashheim is here from EDC, if you want to comment on it, I don't know if the applicant is, is here or not, but you've seen us before, but we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jim, Mayor, members of the Commission, I've been working with Corvent Medical for a little over two years now, when we first interacted with them and, and introduced them to this market, there was always an understanding, they were going to kind of do a crawl, walk, run strategy as they innovated their next generation of ventilator technology. They initially located in R-two building at the NDSU Research and Technology Park, they've been accessing a lot of intern and engineering talent out there, Travis Murphy with, he's COO with Corvent Medical, will tell you more about how they're, they're working with the NDSU and other universities to, to access talent in the market, but now they've, they've kind of graduated there at that next level of their, their evolution, and they're needing more space to, to ramp up some of their manufacturing and, and logistics of their ventilator technology production. So just some real quick highlights, they're going from approximately three thousand square feet in space at R-two to over fourteen thousand square feet of space in, in their new facility, they're going to scale up their hiring significantly, these are good-paying jobs, without benefits averaging ninety, over ninety-five thousand dollars a year for, for the technical talent that they're bringing on, with benefits that equals over a hundred fifteen thousand dollars in salary on average per year. So with that, I'm going to ask that Travis Murphy come up and give you a little more background on the project and what they do.
Thank you, Ryan. Mayor Mahoney and Commission, my name is Travis Murphy, I'm the Chief Financial Officer for Corvent Medical, I want to thank you for allowing me to present to you. By way of background, Corvent Medical started three and a half years ago in response to the need for medical ventilators and, due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Within one year, the company had completed feasibility, design, development, submitted for, submitted and received five-ten K, I'm sorry, FDA emergency use authorization clearance, and began selling the product. And a few months after that, the company was able to get CE Mark to begin selling in Europe, which allowed for the shipment of product to the Ukraine in support of their war effort. Early in twenty, twenty twenty-one, when the vaccines came out and the pandemic started to wane, we began looking at what would a post-COVID, post-COVID environment, or post-pandemic environment look like, and what does our product need to look like to, to match that. We also, at that time, were effectively a virtual company, and felt that we needed to have a home, we were manufacturing the product, we had a contract manufacturing developer in. We had a contract manufacturing developer in California and felt that we needed to find a more friendly environment. We were introduced to the state of North Dakota. And in July of two thousand and twenty-one, we met with Richard Glenn of the Bioscience Association of North Dakota, and Joe Rasso and Ryan Ashim of the Greater Fargo Moorhead Economic Development Corporation. What we learned in that initial meeting, we were surprised. We exceeded our expectations. And from that, we decided to move our corporate headquarters here to Fargo. And in January two thousand and twenty-two, we had a ribbon cutting, and from then, we started development of a next-generation product. Over the summer of two thousand and twenty-two, we hired six interns, three of those who have now become full-time employees. And as of today, we have six full-time employees here in North Dakota. We also have four interns that we've retained from this last summer, and we hope to retain as full-time employees when they graduate next spring. As Ryan said, we did pivot from our earlier location and felt that this location would be better suited for our needs. We are going to occupy fourteen thousand six hundred square feet, of which about half of that is for manufacturing, warehousing, and inspection, which requires specialty flooring, specialty air handling for manufacturing an electronic medical product. As I mentioned, we have six full-time employees right now. We expect that the time that we begin manufacturing our product, we will have an additional nine employees added. And then by the end of two thousand and twenty-four, we are targeting twenty-seven employees. That will grow to seventy-plus employees by the end of two thousand and twenty-seven. As Ryan mentioned, I think we pay our employees very well. And when you add in the benefits, which we pay a hundred percent, we're over a hundred and fifteen thousand plus in our average compensation. We are, with the space that we are moving into, as I said, it requires some specialty equipment and space and flooring and air handling and so forth. We also have to design a quality management system and install that as well. Those all add to the cost. In addition to the personnel, to the equipment, to the build-out, and to the quality control system, we're going to be making a pretty significant investment, and the abatement would help us fund those other programs.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any question by the commission? Is there anybody else who wishes to speak to this project? I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Make the motion.
Strand, Pepcorn? Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. One of the reasons when they were talking to the Tax Incentive Committee is they said the climate was better here, but we had to learn that was the business climate, not the weather climate, Dave.
Mr. Chairman, can I add one thing real quick? So the one thing we're working on is to work with Ryan. We've had questions about how do we monitor the jobs and the pay and all that. So what we're working with is the EDC, and to have them report to the city, because the EDC reports to the state. So they already are doing a lot of formal reporting, and so for us to benefit from that, that's a way for us to monitor with adding a whole bunch of staff time from the City of Fargo's perspective. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yep. Item forty-three, changes to the mat bus route eighteen. I had Julie on the docket, but I don't think Julie's coming here.
Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor. My name is Cole Swinging. I am the Assistant Transit Director of Operations for the City of Fargo, and I'm here tonight to discuss the proposed changes to the bus route, Route Eighteen.
Good.
As seen in your packet, Route Eighteen does cover a large majority of southern portion of Fargo. This includes everything from our main hub, the Ground Transportation Center in downtown Fargo, all the way down to the Fifty-second Avenue Walmart. With that, this bus route takes about an hour and a half to ride fully. And something that we have noticed over the last couple of years is this route is not meeting our on-time performance standards, meaning that if passengers take this route, they may miss their transfers at our main hubs due to the route essentially just being too long to be able to fit in that hour-and-a-half timeframe. So the proposed change that we would like to suggest is to remove a portion of the loop that is down by the Osgood area. This would affect Osgood itself, a couple of businesses along Forty-Fifth Avenue South, and some access to the Cheyenne High School. We would suggest that the route would take its current path west on Forty-Fifth Avenue South, turn south on Forty-Fifth Street South, east on Forty-fourth Avenue South, where it returns to the existing route. With this, it will be removing eight bus stops along the suggested eliminated portion of the route in the Osgood area, reduces the total route distance by about two miles, and reduces the route time by approximately four minutes, which we hope will be enough to help keep the route on time, especially with winter coming up and passengers expecting to make those transfers. In the portion that we're suggesting to remove from the route, we see, we have seen six hundred and fifty-one rides between the ninth of January and the twenty-sixth of June two thousand and twenty-three, which equates to about two people per day. So again, the goal of this is to optimize our on-time performance of the route, to make sure that riders are able to make transfers, and as well as to reduce stress on our bus operators that do drive that route, making it so they aren't having to consistently push to be able to make that time. So I would like to request the motion to approve all proposed route changes for Route Eighteen, starting effectively on October thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to the route change? Anyone wishing to speak? I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Strand? Is there a second?
Second.
Preston? Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Preston?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. Public hearing, we're going to break this into two forty-four. It'd be a special assessment list for the Business Improvement District, the bid fees, and we'll talk about utility fees separate.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. To start the bid assessment discussion, I'd like to play a little video on what the bid does here.[1019.51]
Thank you for your indulgence with that. With that, we have sent out our notices with the Business Improvement District. The assessment this year would be $770,000, and it does go to provide the services that you have seen. We have not heard any protests this year. We did not change the calculation on what the assessment is. The 10% increase is very similar to other property tax, property increases in the, in the community.
Excellent. Do you have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Is there anybody who would like to speak to the bid fees? Does anyone wishing to speak? That's pretty good if you don't have any business coming before us, Steve. I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Commissioner Stranen?
Thank you. Steve, help me understand just what I'm seeing or not seeing. This is a bid and unpaid utilities assessment, but I don't see anything except unpaid utilities. That's all I see.
We're splitting the, the two public hearings. We listed them together. We're going to do the unpaid utilities next.
Is that in our packet? Yeah, okay. I still don't see a breakdown of any of the bid assessments. Is there?
Oh, okay. So we are not required to, to list individually the, the bid assessments, but we are required to send out the notices directly to the public. And so rather than spending the dollars in the forum to list each parcel with the amount of their assessment, we directly mailed the, the notices to the property owners. And so what is in your packet, I believe, is just the notice of hearing.
And no feedback from people?
No feedback. Yep.
Thank you.
If Commissioner Strand wanted a list of how much the fees were, could he get that?
Yes, absolutely. I can, he can give me a parcel and I can look it up.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Colpac?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Preston?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Now, we're going to take the second part as it's a list of the unpaid utility fees. Steve Sprague to explain.
Yeah, so the list that you see in your packet is quite extensive. That was about 350 parcels that we started with when we prepared the list, and this was as of June 30th. So then we sent out our notices, and over the last two months, we've seen 210 individuals that, that satisfied the requirement to get those notices or get those unpaid utilities current. And so now the breakdown is that 25 of those on that list of 140 that we have currently are from casserole water. And since we don't provide the water service, we, we can't go out and disconnect service at, at those properties. In addition, we have six that are either sewer or storm sewer, nine that were commercial properties, 50 that are residential rental, and that's who we've really been working with, is trying to get the residential rental properties to self-manage these accounts. And I think we're really getting there. And then we do have 50 on the list that are homeowners. And the reason that that got high this year was a couple of combined things. And one is that during COVID, we were told not to turn people off, and so that list grew, and we've tried to work with people, and we've gotten to the point where, you know, we're, we're not going to be able to collect from them directly. So we're doing this by putting it on the property owners. The other part of that, the second part of that, is our meter services department has the same staff, the same four people that they had 20 years ago. And now with the growth in the city, we find that they're busy installing new meters and doing that type of thing, and don't have as much time to allocate towards doing turnoffs for us. As I mentioned before the meeting to one of the commissioners is that we have an RFP that is out now for a new metering system, and when we get those installed, we will have the ability to connect and disconnect selected properties from our desktop. And so I think we're going to be able to stay on top of this a little bit more. We have had a lot of discussions with a lot of the property, the people that are on the list here, and they understand what's going on, and this gets them current. And so I don't know that there's anybody here tonight that wants to speak to this.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak about the utility bill? Is there anyone present who wanted to speak? No, I don't think we do. I'll close the public hearing. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, and then I have a question.
Commissioner Preston?
So when you're talking about shutting off, it's, these fees relate to water, wastewater, garbage?
Yes. The, the utility bill includes water, wastewater, garbage, utility, forestry, storm sewer, streetlights, vector control. It's all, all one.
So when you're talking about turning off, you're talking about the water?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Colpac?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Public hearing, special assessments for the 2022 Newland Reconstruction of City ordered sidewalks, Project SR 22A. Steve Sprague.
If you want Commissioner or Mayor, we can combine 45 and 46. They are both sidewalk reconstruction.
Okay, we will add 46 to it as the same? Okay?
Yes, and the reason that we, that we do these two separate from the rest of the special assessment list is they have a separate section in the Century Code that addresses sidewalk improvements. And the reason that, that is separated is there's something, when we're approving a new construction, it's called location and comprising. And so we define what that benefit area is. With sidewalks, it's scattered throughout the city, and so that's why it's separated out in the Century Code.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to their sidewalk assessment? Anybody wanting to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion for 45 and 46? I'll move to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Steve, does this just go as an assessment towards them?
Yes, it, uh, special assessment for sidewalk construction. All of these are reconstructions. They did two projects because of the number of reconstruction capabilities within each project. So they wanted to get more projects done, and so they split the, so that one contractor...
So if you put it on a special assessment, how many years do you have to pay?
On a sidewalk, I believe it's 20. Dan? 20. 20 years on a sidewalk.
20 years, so if it's a thousand dollars, you break that out over 20 years?
Correct.
With what type of interest?
The interest is set by the bonding, and so it can vary depending on whether or not this has been bonded. The last bonding that we did, we were at 4.4% interest.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Strand?
Thank you, Steve. I'm just really curious about, some folks have like a deteriorated sidewalk, and they work with the city and coordinate with contractors and have it come in, and then they spread their payments. Is that the same as this?
Yes, it is. Yep. Same, same program. So our sidewalk engineer goes around and identifies the sidewalks to be done, and then he notifies the property owner. The property owner then can take care of it themselves, or the city can initiate, you know, if we don't hear back from them, then the city will initiate the project, and we do the, you know, we let the bids and, and do it through the, through the low bid process.
And the property owner, if I might continue, the property owner can also initiate this action and reach out to the city and say, can we work with you on this? That's my understanding. If they have a sidewalk that they know they need to get addressed?
Yes, yes.
Rather than wait for inspectors?
Yes, absolutely.
Or a lawsuit?
Yes, I had one on, on my property where I had a tree root that had lifted the property up, and so I worked with the sidewalk engineer to get mine done, so, yep.
So these folks aren't necessarily trouble or problems, they're just finance, it's a way for us to fund it and finance it?
Correct, and to keep our sidewalks in good shape.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Colpac?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Public hearing now for a special assessment list following improvement districts, all having been approved by Special Assessment Commission on 8/23/23. Steve Sprague to explain.
Yes, we have 29 projects here, and we may have a protest. We have had, we've had quite a bit of conversation with at least one person.
Is there anyone present who wants to speak to these improvement districts?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Tim Nation. I would like to address letter C, Improvement District BN 21A. There's the map up here that shows the area where this project is. I'm going to reference Chapter 40-22 of the North Dakota Century Code. It's a long chapter, but to summarize it, it states that municipalities may defray the expense of certain types of projects by creating special assessments, and certain, and it, and it goes on to list those types of projects, and it states that those projects must be within the municipality. And what that means, it's for projects that are the street in front of my house, the street in front of your house, anything within the municipal boundaries of Fargo. What that also means is the city cannot defray the cost of projects outside of the municipal boundaries of Fargo. So it can't charge citizens for projects, projects in West Fargo, can't charge citizens for projects in Horace, and can't charge citizens for projects in Stanley Township. So when we look at the map on the screen where this bridge is located, the north and south, the gray lines, that's I-29, and this bridge is located on 64th Avenue in the green area over I-29. And what this map also shows is the municipal boundaries of Fargo. The yellow is Fargo, and the green is Stanley Township. And that means this bridge is located not in Fargo, but in Stanley Township. And I do not believe that this, the city of Fargo has the authority to levy special assessments for projects that are outside of the municipality. So at this time, I would recommend the motion to deny and dissolve Improvement District BN 21A due to the fact that the project is located outside the municipal boundaries of Fargo, and according to North Dakota Century Code 40-2201, cost of improvements may only be defrayed by special assessments for projects within the municipality.
Can we give an explanation, please?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. We do not special assess in our ET or any other municipality. We, by Century Code, cannot, but we are allowed to quantify, which we do hold those numbers in abeyance until they're annexed into the city. So they, they are not special assessed. They are just quantified for numbers that we have for future.
So what is him as a homeowner? What is he getting assessed?
What's, what's the assessment?
He's getting a certain percentage then, are you saying?
Yes, it's the benefit is spread actually the same.
Okay.
We, we quantify that benefit using our land development code for, for what that area should be in the future. So we, again, we just, we just quantify it for our future annexations.
So when that annexation comes in, then they get that assessment?
Correct.
Okay.
So this will not happen until the annexation?
Correct.
You know, the letter I got in the mail has a coupon that I can cut out to pay for this special assessment. And when I go and look at my parcel information on the city of Fargo's website, it shows that I'm going to have to be paying for this special assessment.
So, yes.
And it is not my belief that this area will ever be annexed into Fargo, since it's the interstate.
The, the bridge is, is special assessed. That's by our infrastructure policy.
Tom, you have something to say?
Yeah, I'm jumping in just because I think there might be a confusion in, in the question that Dan answered. What Dan spoke to is that we do not special assess properties that are outside of our current city limits. We quantify that benefit when they come into the city. We do special assess it. I think what the gentleman here is speaking to is that the bridge that crosses Interstate I-29, when looking at the image here, where that bridge crosses is not within city limits. Is that the, is that correct, sir?
That is correct.
Okay.
And what the city is trying to do is make me as a citizen pay for projects that are not in the city of Fargo, and my concern is how far does this go? Do, do I pay for projects in West Fargo and Horace also?
And, and I, I certainly can't speak to that, that Century Code. I don't know if Nancy can. Don't want to put her on the spot either, but really, you know, what this bridge is doing is connecting city of Fargo right of way on the east side of the interstate to city of Fargo right of way on the west side of the interstate. Someday, this portion of the interstate will be annexed into the city of Fargo, but it is not currently, the strip of, of Interstate right of way is not, this gentleman is correct, is not currently within city of Fargo limits.
But he's not being charged for that, he's being charged for what's in the city of Fargo.
Part of the assessment would include a portion of the bridge, the bridge which does cross over this portion of Interstate right of way that is not currently within city limits.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Preston?
And Tom, can you break out, I'm assuming there's some federal dollars in this bridge? Break out the different funding?
Yes, we certainly can. The, the way that the, the bridge itself is special assessed is a capped cost. You've, you've heard us use those terms before. I'm going off of memory. I don't remember if it's a slightly over a penny or slightly over 10 cents per square foot, but it is capped, and so a very small portion of the bridge was special assessed to the benefiting area. Again, as far as legal opinion of, of the ability to do this in this situation, I, I don't know, to be honest.
So he has the right to challenge it in courts if he wants. Commissioner Strand?
Is it essential that, that we act on this item C tonight, or can we get our own legal interpretation prior to voting on it? I think he has a legitimate question, as I'm hearing it.
We do have two weeks.
Could, Mayor, I'd move that we delay this item C for two weeks until we can get a legal answer to Mr. Nation's concerns, and then at least I'd be more comfortable voting on it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
So, Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Pepcorn?
I have a question. So we're, are we talking about just separating that one out of, and then just having that be a separate item?
Just that one item.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Roll call vote.
Strand?
Yes.
Colpac?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Can I have a motion on the rest of them?
I would like to speak on the rest of them as well. It states that special assessments for the following improvement districts, all having been approved by the Special Assessment Commission on 8/29/23. The Special Assessment Commission did not approve any of these during that meeting, and you can go back and watch the minutes, or watch the video, or check the minutes if you want to fact-check that also. That's a concern I have, maybe it's only procedural, but I think that needs to be addressed, that none of them were approved during that meeting.
Correct. We did hold the public hearing. After the public hearing, the commission does sign off on all the improvement, or the benefits to those improvement districts.
Do you have a form of vote?
There's, they, they do an actual sign off on it, so there's a letter that they all sign and date as to their, they're approving the benefit.
He just didn't see that?
That's, it's a public record, but no, it, it wasn't done on virtually that you could see it. It's not...
We can send Tim the public record.
Yes, we can.
Okay. Any other discussion? Commissioner Preston?
Can you explain to me the legal authority or the legal role of the Special Assessment Commission?
They, they approve the benefit, not the cost, of the infrastructure policies which are initiated by this commission. So they go through the process. We've created a district that we believe, and the Special Assessment Commission believe is benefiting from this, from these improvement districts. And at the end, as construction goes through and is finalized, then they reconvene. We, do a drive-through, we drive and touch every project, and after that, we have our hearing, and then we, they go through the process of approving that benefit, and it's sent to the auditor, which goes to the, the legal section of the paper, and now it's before you tonight for approval.
Any other discussion? Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Colpac?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Preston?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Public hearing is, 48 is to be continued to 10/30/23. It's, the Al, uh, gave Mexican restaurant to have a motion to continue it.
I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Colpac?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Public hearing continuance to 10/30/23. It's a transfer alcoholic license from Prairie Pasta to Summit nightclub. We have a continuance of this as well. Do I have a motion?
I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Colpac?
Aye.
Strand?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Public hearing now, this isn't going to be continued, Steve, so you have to do some work. Transfer of Class AB alcoholic beverage license to Chubbs Pub and Package Place, doing business at Chubbs Pub and Package Place on 421 University Drive. It's an ownership change.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, Commissioner. So before you is an AB license. It is an on and off sale license. It has been owned by the Doyle family for many, many years. Mark Doyle is ready to retire, and his longtime manager has been selected as the person that would purchase this business and take over. Has gone through the background check. There were no issues of concern, and it does come to you with a recommendation of approval from the Liquor Control Board.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this transfer? Anybody wishing to speak? We'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Colpac?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item 51, application for Class GH alcoholic beverage license for Adami and Company, doing business at Soho 23, to be located at 1450 25th Street South.
The Class GH is a restaurant license where the food sales must exceed the alcohol sales. It does not allow for a physical bar, and it requires that the alcohol be served at a table or a booth. This is an Asian-based or themed restaurant, and it'll be located in the old Himalaya and Yak. Has gone through the background check with no issues of concern, and does come to you with a recommendation of approval from Liquor Control.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this license? Anybody wanting to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Colpac?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item 52, application for a Class W alcoholic beverage license for Uncork Lounge, doing business at Uncork Lounge, to be located at 5601 33, 33 St. Avenue South. Steve Sprague to explain.
Uncork Lounge is a Class W license, which is a wine license. It does not require food sales, and it does allow a physical bar. This is a building that is under construction currently, and it is to be a wine lounge, as it says, and gone through the background check, and comes to you with a recommendation of approval from Liquor Control.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this application? Is there anyone wanting to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Preston?
Aye.
Colpac?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item 53, application for CW alcoholic beverage license at the 45th Lounge, doing business at the 4050 Lounge, located at 2551 45th Street South, Unit 129. Are we going to go through all the alphabet tonight, Steve? Go on.
No, no, not, not the whole thing. Thank you. So the CW is beer and wine, so they have the similar properties. Both allow a physical bar, and neither require food sales. The owner of this currently has skill cuts, which is a barber. He says it's a more of a high, high tempo or high turnover, and where, where they're looking at with the 4050 Lounge is, is more of a relaxed kind of atmosphere, where you come in and have a cocktail before your haircut or after. Has gone through the background check, was a recommendation on a three to one vote at Liquor Control. We had one member absent. One of the, the, the board member that voted no was concerned about not staying, having alcohol be your primary focus. So it does come with a three to one recommendation from Liquor Control.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this application? Anyone present who wishes to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Colpac?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item 54, application for a W alcoholic beverage license at the 1889, doing business at 1889, to be located at 602 Main Avenue.
And that's the old Wimmer's Building, if you're wondering where that is. The Class W, again, is wine only, and it does allow a physical bar. This business, the, the concept is cooking demonstrations where, you know, you'll be bringing your food in, and, and they'll help you cook and prepare the food. The reason that it didn't qualify for a food license, like a G license or something like that, was because they're not selling the prepared foods, and so they didn't get a, a restaurant license from the Health Department, and so it didn't qualify for the G license. So they stepped up to the W to get this. It does come with a recommendation of approval after the background checks from the Liquor Control.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this application? Anybody wanting to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Colpac?
Aye.
Preston?[1556.66]
Item fifty-six, recommendation to approve the agreement for grant emergency egress easement and to grant option for parking lease at T and K Property Management to be presented. I'm sorry, this has been withdrawn. Good, we'll take a five-minute recess and then we'll go over the final budget. Thank you. Call the meeting back to order. Thank you. It's good that people are communicating. That's a good thing to do in between. So we're going to go over the final preliminary budget as the final budget for two thousand twenty-four. The purpose of this presentation is to summarize the two thousand twenty-four City Fargo budget, which was presented at our meeting on August seventh, two thousand twenty-three. At that time, we discussed the challenges of the two thousand twenty-four budget. The City Commission was informed of budget status throughout the developmental stages. The budget team was very aware of the city provided service expectations in a rapidly going community constituent, constituent, constituent concerns with the various tax and fee implications and the competitive employment market forces that seek to lure our in-house talent away. Priorities were and will remain the following. Hold the line on expenses through limited new full-time employee hires, conservative capital purchases, and controlling our annual operating expenses. Two, honor the City of Fargo commitments to public safety and all other departments which support public safety. Item three, reevaluate both revenues and expenses. We assess fee structures for the city services and city provided infrastructure and prioritize expenses within personnel and equipment needs. These decisions were made through this budget, these decisions made within this budget were carefully considered to balance all the factors we face. So if we start with general fund expenses with comments of the three primary categories on the budget, it's always been personnel, operating, and capital. Personnel, a five percent increase in personnel expenses over two thousand twenty-three. The objective for two thousand twenty-four is to retain and recruit. The COLA is two percent. This is less than other local government entities but was decided as the best option given the competing demands that we are balancing this budget. Recruitment incentive program began in two thousand twenty-four to encourage our employees to all be recruiters of new talent to join our team. Expanding the longevity pay policy to incentivize staying with our team as employees grow their experience with us. Through our strategic planning process, we will assess the results of a market compensation study to consider ongoing and future compensation models, along with onboarding citywide Staffing for Success Plan. The new general fund employees for two thousand twenty-four were limited to public safety and corresponding support services. Fifteen firefighters for Station Eight were included in this year's budget. They will be added mid-year, so the two thousand twenty-four budget funding includes about six months of these salary and benefited costs. Grant managing fund will be up to six police officers, one IT help desk associate, and two public works equipment operators. In operating, the directive here was to significantly limit in these areas. While we see nearly a fifteen percent increase in this category, the large portion of that overage is due to the budget philosophy change within two thousand twenty-four not to report unallocated expense credits. Other increases are largely attributed to inflation, for example, software subscriptions, maintenance agreements, and supplies and equipment. Capital, the directive here was to limit capital spending. We saw a decrease in spending when compared to two thousand twenty-three approved amounts. These are generally small dollar capital items and often include office fit-ups and equipment expenses. Now I'd last Finance Director Susan Thompson to come up and she will describe minor modifications that have occurred since the preliminary budget presentation. Please be noted that we moved millions of dollars from the initial budget to get this balance. She will go through different categories to show you the changes we made from the first presentation.
Hi, yes, before Mayor Mahoney discusses the final proposed budget in specific, I wanted to address kind of the few changes that we had from the preliminary budget. So this spreadsheet might look a little familiar. We talked about it at the meeting on August seventh. The intent of that was to talk you through kind of the chronology of how a budget is developed and also talk through the challenges that we had balancing many department requests with available resources. So we had talked through column eight in our preliminary meeting. So I wanted to talk about the difference between columns eight, which was the preliminary, and then now what we're proposing as the final. So our job in finance and the budget team doesn't end on August seventh when we have a preliminary budget. We continue to spend additional time reviewing our calculations, fielding additional requests, and doing further evaluation. So column ten summarizes the changes that we made and I'll talk through them briefly. It's a little tiny print, so I apologize, but the very first line is a change to the property tax line item and we're not changing the property tax calculation. It was really an oversight on our part in accounting. We have a requirement that one mil goes to a specific account that's not in the general fund, the city share of the special assessments, and then point one mil goes to noxious weeds. So really, that number in column eight was a gross number. We need to use the net of column nine. Then we made a change, the next line item is just a kind of a nominal adjustment to our state aid expectation. And then we made some changes to the enterprise fund transfers. We worked through, enterprise fund transfers covers the big capital items and also the general fund, so we made some changes, including deferring a project for this room actually and moving a vehicle purchase to one of the enterprise funds, which allowed additional monies for the general fund. Then on the expense side, the very first one is personnel. I think we've talked about this with our, with the way we use our software. We have to budget as if all sixteen hundred employees for the city work every single day, which we know is not correct. There's going to be some attrition, so we just have to kind of estimate what that is. Otherwise, you know, that would be saying no to other budget items. We want to make sure we're using a realistic number. So based on what we have for salary savings year-to-date, it looks as though next year we could budget a little more additional. Then we made a few changes to some different line items, the net of which was only sixty-eight hundred, or sixty-eight thousand dollars, sorry. And then we made some small adjustments to the capital account, some swapping out some different account numbers and we had a duplicate entry. So those are the changes that we made. And so the number that you'll be viewing and voting on is column nine, which is the final preliminary budget.
You will note that in item seven, we did cut from the budget. The requested budget was six million higher, so we have worked very hard to bring up, make cuts to bring the budget down to a more reasonable amount. Thank you, Susan. In the expense category, earlier aside, with two thousand twenty-four budget figures were assigned to each major category here, total expense budget was one hundred and nineteen point seven seven billion. You will notice that salaries and benefits compose seventy-five point four percent of our general fund budget. Please note that the budget team continued to review and analyze the budget after the initial presentation, as just mentioned by Susan. Overall increase is seven point one. The large expense within the two thousand twenty-four budget was the addition of Fire Station Number Eight in South Fargo. As we discussed before, there is more than one-time capital cost to acquiring land and constructing the building. We need to staff it, outfit the new staff, and fund operating and capital gear to make sure it performs as designed. We worked collaboratively with Chief Dirksen to arrive at a plan which adequately assess the facility but does not bring on the staff too early. We are bringing onboard the firefighters mid-year so that the net effect is paying for only six months in two thousand twenty-four. This was intentionally done to reduce costs while also maximizing readiness for the new station's opening. This will mean, however, that we do not see the full cost of the full-time employees in Fire Station Number Eight until two thousand twenty-five budget. Effectively, we need to fund another seven point five FTEs cost in two thousand twenty-five. And I'd just like to make you aware of this for future requirements for funding. We appreciate you working with Commissioner Kopeck on this project. It takes good people to provide good service and I'd like to make sure all commissioners, our community, and members of the media remember just how much growth we have encountered and how it takes people to serve people. The Fargo Fire Department, striving diligently to maintain its ISO Class One designation, has seen a thirty-two percent increase in calls over the last five years. The Fargo Police Department has seen an eighteen percent increase since nineteen, or two thousand seventeen. Construction permits issued by our inspections Department has increased twenty-nine percent since two thousand seventeen. And Ben Dow's team in Public Works has seen an increase of fifty-one lane miles, ten percents through two thousand seventeen. We cannot expect world-class service if we continue to grow our community without correspondingly grow our team, which is providing the necessary services to our residents, businesses, and visitors. If we do not adequately, if we are not adequately staffed, we will lose staff we have and erode public's trust in our ability to serve them well. This pie graph represents Fargo's well-diversified general fund revenue sources. The proportions generally are fairly similar and consistent from year to year. You will notice that the two items we are primarily discussing tonight, franchise fees and property taxes, compose forty-four percent of our general fund. Interestingly, from an illustrative point of view, these two revenue sources have only enough funds to pay for our two public safety departments, Fargo Fire and Fargo Police, with our other departments being paid for through the revenue sources other than property taxes and franchise fees. Obviously, property taxes are an important component of our revenue and I'd like to focus on them. The two thousand twenty-four mil value is eight hundred and two, three hundred thousand dollars, up from the two thousand twenty-three valuation of seven hundred and fifteen and three hundred and ninety dollars. As the table shows, valuation increases remain nearly equally balanced between commercial and residential parcels, four point four and four point two. We are, however, seeing more growth in the commercial factor. Overall, commercial properties are contributing six point seven percent while residential parcels are contributing five point four percent. That's one of the reasons we like to see commercial growth within the city because it helps defray the costs of the residents. The city is proposing to utilize fifty-five of its mills for the two thousand twenty-four budget. Hector International Airport is utilizing additional two mills for its usage. As we discussed in August, this budget includes a two-mil increase with special emphasis to be placed upon community safety, including traditional public safety departments along with many City of Fargo supporting departments who also contribute to our shared mission of public safety. Following the July fourteenth critical incident which shook our community to its core, Commissioner John Strand asked us to explore additional two mills to fund community safety initiatives. Our team worked diligently to identify community safety and staffing operating in capital costs to support this request. On the screen, you will see the usage of one point five two five million generated through these traditional mills. We are funding additional squads and cars, equipment supplies, software for the Fargo Police Department to the total of six hundred and thirty-seven, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Fargo Fire is receiving additional equipment and supplies for the total of eighty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. Fargo Cass Public Health is receiving approximately three hundred thousand dollars to fund harm-reduction staff already working in this division across mobile outreach, withdrawal management, the deck, and sheltering. Approximately five hundred thousand would be invested in security upgrades to city facilities, recruiting efforts for citywide staffing, a market compensation study including public safety agencies, and additional costs for the Cass County jail operations. Additionally, while not being funded with these two mills, I want you to note that we are, will be engaging a comprehensive consultant-led study in two thousand twenty-four to evaluate our current process relating to the homelessness and to identify gaps, ways we can improve, and approaches to leverage metro-wide partnerships in tackling this challenge as effectively and efficiently as possible. We feel the government around us has to help us. The City of Fargo is not the only one that needs to attack this issue and work in a manner in which we can do what state-of-the-art, what people are doing, trying to get away from crisis management and trying to be manageable issues that we have within our community. We have to remember that these are our citizens and we need to take care of our citizens. This table shows the revenue categories of two thousand twenty-four with budget dollars attached. The two thousand revenue comes up to one hundred and nineteen point seventy-seven billion. As we mentioned, you will see some slight adjustments since the rollout in August seventh. The overall general fund budget decreased by approximately half a million dollars due to some reconsiderations. In the case of revenues, this adjustment reflects one point one mills that have been designated for non-general fund purposes and should not have been reflected in the budget, and that's why part of the revenue went down, as Ms. Thompson had explained to us. The budget overall net increases about a hundred and forty-five dollars to the owner of a two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar home in Fargo. The two mills will bring in twenty-five dollars a year. The already approved franchise fee will generate sixty dollars annually. The street lights and forestry modifications will produce sixty dollars annually. Altogether, this amounts to a hundred and forty-five dollars we had mentioned earlier. That will mean an extra forty cents per day for most of our residents. This is significant and not to be taken for granted. Our last option was to raise taxes and fees. There were plenty of items we cut from the initial budget to arrive at this current budget. This was not easy. In fact, this was the most difficult budget I have ever done during my eighteen years at the City of Fargo. We've heard your concerns and difficulties we're all experiencing in this challenging economy. Do want to point out some programs that are available for people on a fixed budget that are limited and having difficulties. The North Dakota Homestead Tax Credit is a great program and I encourage our residents to see if able, if they might be able to benefit from it. We have a hundred and thirty million dollars of property which people are taking advantage of Homestead Credit and also Veterans Benefits. The changes that occurred during this session include, the maximum income limits have been increased from forty-two thousand to seventy thousand and allows a deduction for medical expenses. The maximum credit has been increased from one, a one thousand six hundred and ninety-six dollars to two thousand five hundred and seventy-seven dollars annually. The five hundred thousand asset limit has been eliminated. The households with an income before forty thousand will save up to two thousand five hundred and sixty-eight annually in property taxes and the households with income between forty and seventy thousand will save one thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars annually. The State of North Dakota expects many more people, people to be eligible, increasing the spending amount by over four times as last year. Applications will be available at the City of Assessor's Office and City of Fargo. In addition to the Homestead Tax Credit, there are programs to help with emergency assistance, discounting home and cell phone service, and other expenses. These links are on the screen and will be available via our website for people to review to see if they might be able to benefit it, and I would encourage people to do that because when we talked to Public Service Commission, they said many people could qualify for this but are not taking advantage. The price of government is defined as a sum of all taxes, fees, and charges collected by the city divided by the city's total aggregate income. Aggregate income is determined by multiplying the mean household income and the number of households we have. The data sources are the Fargo Annual Comprehensive Financial Report and in two thousand twenty-two United States Census Data. City Fargo's current price for government is four point seven eight percent. This is actually a decrease from previous years due to Fargo's aggregate income growing faster than its revenues. Additional households and higher mean income would help equate and help diversify our tax base. This arrives at the roll-up of the two thousand twenty-four budget calendar. Today, October second, is the day for us to discuss the approval of the final budget and applicable tax levies. I will kindly remind all of us that per North Dakota Century Code, we need to have a final budget approved and transmitted to Cass County by October seventh, two thousand twenty-three. Recommended motion is on the screen and as you noted, it's an adjusted preliminary budget presented this evening. Do I have the recommended motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I have a few comments.
Mr. Pepcorn.
First of all, the, I hope everybody looks at their Excel energy bill. And so instead of raising it ten percent or seven percent, we're raising it one hundred percent from two percent, two percent tax to a four percent tax. And the worst thing about that is this is going to impact low-income and fixed-income people the most. It's called a regressive tax. And so that's, it's awful. Then the next one is, I'll bring in my property tax. So they showed the slide where it was going to increase a hundred and forty-five dollars. Do you remember that? You know how much mine's going up? Twenty-four percent. And so that's more than one pizza a month in my household. I eat a lot of pizza, but not, not, let's see, four thousand dollars. And for a lot of people on a fixed income that are retired, four thousand dollars, that's an ass kicker. They're, they're going to have to leave their house. And so when you talk about homelessness, what you're doing is raising the cost, the cost of housing for the residents of Fargo. And I hope you all got your emails. Did you read all the emails that you got? I could, I, I think I had probably a hundred and fifty emails from residents of Fargo and they are not happy. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Question.
I just want to say that the staff have really done a great job this year and it went all the way up to this afternoon, having the opportunity to meet, to understand more fully everything that's been done. The staff truly have, I think, looked in every nook and cranny and the budget that's being presented, I think, is real solid. So I just want to indicate my support.
Mr. Kopeck.
Mr. Chair, firstly, I, I would like to reiterate that twelve dollars extra a month on top of all other costs right now is not insignificant for the, for the average homeowner. But acknowledging that, we are rightsizing a budget based on decisions really that were made three years ago when it comes to salaries and benefits in order to recruit and retain staff for the long term. And at that time, there should have been forecasting and a sustainable look at how do we continue revenues once those decisions were made? And that's what this year's budget is doing is really rightsizing. Couple of lessons learned, yes, I agree, the staff has done a yeoman's job on this year's budget with a lot of work and input, but I think we still had some lessons learned. Now with a permanent Finance Director in place and the city administration secure with staffing, I would propose that we begin next year's budget process as soon as possible and have much more community engagement and communication as part of that process. Secondly, we're going to be, part of this budget includes purchasing new finance software, which will give us the ability to do much more analytics when it comes to forecasting and spending. and spending, and we should take the time that we need to take to bring along our citizens so they understand the challenges but also have the opportunity to provide input. And I think those are my comments. Thank you.
Richard Strand.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. It's, I agree, this is a very challenging, tough financial time for everybody, and we've all heard from folks on both sides, some saying that they just can't take it anymore. We had a speaker two weeks ago that was just so emotional, and, and, and it's so real. The challenges we face making ends meet, and, and the citizens have those realities right front, upfront every day. So do, so do we. So does every level of government. So does the state. I mean, yeah, we're growing, but our city's exploding in growth. And, and I, we would be remiss not to address the needs that come with a growing city. That would be on our shoulders if we turned our backs and didn't pay attention to the folks falling through the cracks, to the folks struggling to make it one day to the next, to the folks who don't have roofs over their heads or food on their table or in their fridge even, or even have a fridge. You know, so I will, I will go this route and gamble on delivering for the people the needs that they need to have met. And yes, it's going to cost more, but we're going to pay more if we don't deliver these services. We're going to pay more in law enforcement. We're going to pay more in emergencies rooms. We're going to pay more in all these services that are provided on a daily basis. Hundreds of people on a, that our mobile outreach unit touches and gets them support and help versus calling the police and then taking them by, down to the emergency room all the way across town. It's just incalculable. Money does not come from trees. The people work hard for their money. Please, I hope anybody out there wondering about our hearts, it's, it's, it's not our intention to burden you further. We're just trying to spread it out and do the best we can for our greater good of the city and the people. We need a safe community. On July 14th, we were down three officers in, in one day. Our budget originally called for two police officers for this next year. We're hoping to get a grant for six. That's still not enough. We have a daily clamor, yeah, we get calls and emails about budget, we do. We get those who support us, too. But I get as many emails and outreaches from folks about, "Stop this street racing. Stop this sense of not feeling safe in some parts of town." There's expectations of us. You know, imagine if we didn't grow this new fire department, and all of a sudden our response time went from six or seven minutes to nine or 10 minutes. You know, when, when we do the diversion, one of the benefits when you do the diversion is you're not going to play flood insurance. One of the benefits of having public safety like fire protection is your insurance costs are dramatically less. This is on our shoulders. And, and one last thing, I'd like to compare our budget growth to the state's budget growth. We have this very, very conservative state with a budget going up like that through the roof. So it's not just us. And, and, and I'll, one last comment, and thank goodness for our people who deliver. If we didn't have people, we wouldn't have anything. If we didn't have people in our trenches doing the work, we wouldn't have any services. You know, providing about a 2%, 2% COLA, that's what we should be apologizing for, instead of 3% to 5%, which is everybody else's deliverance of job salary wage increases. So we're not, we're not, we're not there yet. But thanks to everybody, and thanks to the citizens who are giving us the room to try and make this work, to do our best, to, to just keep growing the city forward.
And just John's last comment, I want the employees to know that basically we're doing a market survey that'll be ready this fall, and we will look at 24 to probably look at those COLAs and those elements of market competitiveness. We have great staff, great people, the City of Fargo. I, I thank you all for all the hard work you do every day. You make me proud. It's great to say I'm the mayor from Fargo, because I know you really care when you get out there and take care of our people. I appreciate that. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask one question? In regards to, and by all means, yes, people are, are suffering, especially those on the fixed income situation, but if we could somehow advertise more the programs that are available, there's actually a lot of them. And if people aren't accessing those, it very well might be a lack of awareness. So I don't know how we could do that other than our website, but something a little bit more extensive than that, getting that information out, I think, would be really helpful.
Mr. Kolpak, could you work with your communications team and do that?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Kolpak?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
No.
Mahoney?
Aye.
You have my recommendations for appointments to the boards and commissions, the Human Rights Commission and the Library Board. Do I have a motion?
Just a move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Preston?
Aye.
Kolpak?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Applications for property tax exemptions for improvements made to buildings, do I have a motion?
Uh, some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Kolpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Liaison, Commissioner Simon updates. I'll start with John Strand.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think it's worth noting that four of us, Commissioner Kolpak, Commissioner Preston, Mayor Mahoney, and I attended the North Dakota League of Cities in Bismarck last week, and that's just a, you know, a real, real delight, you know? Just from our table, Commissioner Preston's from, from Mayville, Portland, Mayor, Mayor Mahoney's from Devil's Lake, Commissioner Kolpak's from Grand Forks, East Grand Forks, and I'm from Crystal Hoopel, North Dakota, up northern part. That's a delight to see these folks from all these little towns out there where there are homes. We're all from those little towns out there. And, and, and what a joy it is to, to intersect with all these city leaders, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of city leaders across the state, and, and listen and learn and, and connect with each other and get to know each other. So that, that was a, that was a really great conference. The topics just, you know, some, workforce development is huge, childcare is, the one topic, they had a group, everybody participating in the one seminar was childcare. It's just immense, the childcare challenges, the opioids, opioid substance abuse challenges, mental health, behavioral health, those topics, homelessness and housing, affordable housing, these are the things we focus in on, but it was just a great experience. One more time, to join our peers from these towns across the state.
Commissioner Kolpak.
Yeah, and as far as, I just have two updates verbally. As far as the North Dakota League of Cities Convention, our new Southeast Regional Director is Mayor Bernie Dartis from West Fargo, so he was elected as well. So congratulations to Mayor Dartis. And I just want to congratulate, last Friday, we had the graduation ceremony of the Joint Fire Academy, welcomed six new firefighters to the ranks and six new to West Fargo. It's a great example of collaboration and efficiency to have this Joint Fire Academy that has been so successful, and the trainers are the best in the country. That's my report.
I just add on to that, it was fun to see the fire department's graduation, and Chief, you keep adding more and more people. It's fun to see replacements. Yeah, now you need five more, okay, thank you. But it's good to see the characters that come to us. We had a lot of Minnesota people are coming on our board, and it just, it's delightful to see the people that sign up and service our community, so I appreciate that. Commissioner Preston?
I have nothing tonight.
Mr. Pepcorn?
So my committees, the liaisons, the EDIC, inspections, liquor control, engineering, special assessment, all had items tonight, so then I won't give you an update. And you know where I'm from? Fargo, North Dakota. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Some moved.
Second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.